Should I see anything up there or no? All right, meeting open at 6:02. We are being recorded probably, definitely. Couple times. All right. So first up, we have meeting minutes from September 14th. To look at. So, okay, I think I have. Wait a minute, no. I was just looking at the wrong thing. This is the meeting minutes from September 21st. That's what we're looking at first. There we go. Now we know what we're talking about. Okay, so. I did, I think I read these last. So. Okay, so make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September 21st, 2020 as written. Is there a second? Any discussion? On favor? I sign that one if you want to sign it. And then we have our joint meeting, wait. Yeah, joint meeting minutes with town council moderator, finance committee accountant and town clerk from the 28th. So I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September 28th, 2020 as written. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, do we have any audience participation before we go? Nope, good thing TJ missed that. We won't, we won't hear from him. We're gonna go straight to a motion to go to COVID update. Which is item B under unfinished business. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right, Jennifer. If you can unmute yourself. Is that, I'm assuming that's Jennifer on the phone line there.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can. Wow, this is so fancy.
Well, you don't know how long it took me to figure that out. Just a star six. Okay, um, anyways, all right, so our update for today. As of October 5th, we have 626 new cases with Blanford holding its three confirmed cases. Hamden County ranks number four out of 16 counties having the most rise in cases. Parts of Mass are opening up to phase three with step two. I'm sure you guys have all heard that. With that being said, we're putting together a few guidelines in regards to Halloween and the use of the gym and the town offices. To coincide with some of these new updates. We're also getting more and more people making special requests to hold events. And I just want everybody to understand that when we do this, we have to look at each individual request. As an individual, not as a whole. Just because we say yes to one and no to another. It bear, it bears on the size of the event, what the event is for and the effect and the impact it will have on the community. And we use the mandatory and the recommendations from the state. You mix these regulations the state puts out and you have to weigh that with what's best for our small community. And it does become a task and a struggle. So we try to accommodate everybody and we understand that everyone's event is important. So that's really what I have. Do you guys have any questions?
No, I guess I have a question. Do you want the rec committee to submit something to you for trunk or treating?
Well, now trunk or treating was on the list of a high risk. I spoke with Joanne on, I spoke with Joanne on that. They put out a, like a risk factor. So they had a low risk factor, medium and high. On activities for Halloween. And that's one of the things that we're really looking at and reviewing because if the committee could, could submit something, that would be great and that might help. But I do want everybody to know right now they're in as a high risk.
Okay.
And I do know that they, you know, with the phases going to step two, that they've also said that if you're not in the red.
Okay.
And, and you know, I don't really know where we fall. And that's the struggle because our little town has only had three. And even though the rest is in the red. You know, do we expose the town? Do we do that? But yeah, on the other hand, you know, we've been pretty good.
Well, I think, and we'll, we're gonna meet tomorrow and talk about it some more, but I think we can limit it to Blanford residents too, which is helpful. No, but I think even if we just say, I mean, we're not gonna like. You know, actually do anything about it if someone shows up, but we're, but we're gonna post it as Blanford residents. I think that that will make somewhat of a difference.
I think it's a pretty high risk myself.
Okay.
Yeah, but we, we're having something here.
Not in the gym. We're gonna do something outside.
Even if it's outside, it's gonna be something the kids will be getting candy. I don't think they should be going house to house.
No, not house to house. We're gonna actually, we're gonna meet tomorrow. We're gonna talk about it. Come up with a safety plan that we're gonna propose to the board of health. And then actually, so next week, we can let the select board know about it. But I definitely think the kids need something. I mean, being in the school system and emotional.
You know what? I don't disagree with that Kara. It's just that we really have to weigh everything in this.
Yeah.
So I, I don't wanna say yes, I don't wanna say no. And I want people to know that, you know. Where we're at. You know, and that's why I say, I really, the Halloween issue is just something that we really need to look at before even putting it out there to the community that yes, this is what we're doing.
Yeah. Okay, I'll give you, we'll give you tomorrow, after tomorrow Jennifer, and then we can go back and forth with you know, any changes you guys feel that you want us to make.
Is there any way we could have something, and I know it short notes because you're meeting tomorrow and then I'm meeting on Wednesday. Is there any way that you could get something to us? You know, before three o'clock on Wednesday?
I think if we type as we talk tomorrow, we should be able to do that.
Okay, and, and any questions that might come up with it? And, and this conversation about the trunk or treat, my first response to Joanne was yes, it's great, go and do it, you know? You know, her ideas and, and everything were great. And then when this came out about being a high risk, but then yet we're changing to step two.
Yeah.
This is the part that the board struggles with.
Yeah.
This is our, our biggest struggle because, you know, my heart says yes, let's do this because they do need something. And then the other part of me says, well, you know, what about the community? So.
Thank you Jennifer.
Okay, thanks Kara.
Have a good one.
You too.
Okay. We are gonna meet, the rec committee is gonna meet tomorrow and then we're gonna give the board an update after we've come up with a proposal for board of health.
It'd be good spreading around the park back here.
Yeah, that's what we're thinking. Yeah, get some exercise for that candy. Yeah, we used to have people hide and jump out and scare us. Oh my God, yeah, right? Do you remember that? It was fabulous back in the day. Scared the heck out of us. All right, so, um. Next up, I'm thinking that we go down to action item C. So that Chief Modder doesn't have to stay here all night. So I'll make a motion to go to action item C, 90 day review, Fire Chief David Modder. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, so, um, my thought on this is to let Tom sort of start with it, take the lead because I come on up chief, I haven't had much experience working directly with you chief, so I don't really have I don't, I don't feel like there's much I can put, yeah, right? That's usually a good thing. Yes, I have the digital one here. Oh, and then this is what you needed me, okay. So I'm gonna let Tom go ahead and start because I know he is more direct.
I work with him pretty much constantly. And he's turning your fire department around. Everybody feels like they belong to it now.
That's great.
I think that's a real step in the right direction. Dave, I commend you for that. You have an idea of what we went through before, so we won't even get into it. But everything that I went through on here is outstanding. More than we could ask for. The guys are, are getting used to it. They like him. I guess he liked us and keeps coming back. So. I think he deserves an outstanding fire chief.
Good. Good. I mean, all I've heard is good things. I, I know that the, you guys just did the mask distribution, which was awesome. People really appreciated that. I really don't, I haven't heard any complaints, so that's really, you know, the best that you can.
Well, we worked on making one over the weekend.
You worked on that? So, um. I was just trying to remember our goals that we had set. I think we had set a goal around, there was a software program that you were gonna look at. Yep.
Two plans that MEMA requires.
Yep.
Yep. There was emergency management truck or emergency event. You and I talked about it, I don't think you ever talked about it initially. So for the station software. The current one, we are paid through the end of this month.
Okay.
So the new one, they're gonna start us 15 days early. That will take effect November 1st. That will go off of that.
Nice.
So we get 15 days of training, they call it. For me, the, just the data that it generates along, just for grant applications, the information that the state and federal courts have sent. Currently, what would take me two minutes to run this software is taking about 45 minutes.
Yeah.
So it will streamline that. And it generates activity reports. So at the end of the month, you can print the report and it shows all the calls on it, high charts, burn rates. What I did previously was we shared that every month on the department Facebook page so that the people realize
That's awesome, yeah.
And I've heard it time and time again, well, sleepy little Blanford, sleepy little Blanford, it's like 100 calls as you're aware.
Yeah.
And they're blaming you for most of that. They get busy, folks a lot.
Yeah.
But that way the public can see what's going on.
Yeah.
Not just nobody's there, they're there.
Yeah.
You don't always see them. The truck, we have the contractor.
Yep.
Before you're signed tonight.
Yep.
That truck is in production. Built as a demonstrator model. So if everything stays the path and they have to throw out that COVID camp. Truck is being built in California, Florida.
Yep.
Everything stays the course that truck will be delivered in February.
Okay. Awesome. Good, that's exciting. Um, and then you said another one of the goals was the MEMA plans.
So the, the two plans, I found them. I'm not sure if they're, what the finished product was.
Okay.
But they are the template that MEMA put out.
Okay.
Basically, what we said is insert town name here too.
Okay.
So I'm going through the one continuity of operations plan. All told is probably 700 pages. So I'm going through, everything's gotta be changed because it'll say chief of life official. And then I'll need that, it'll say select board chair, town administrator, mayor, city. So I gotta go through the whole, everything to get the Blanford plan.
Sure.
And Tom, there's a thing in there on sheltering. And I had heard of this problem before when you scanned it. That generic plan requires about 30 people. Opened shelter.
Okay.
It doesn't make sense to put in a plan knowing you can't.
Yeah, absolutely.
So once I get the base plan done, everybody gets a piece of advice, there's a section of conference, some board commissioner, treasurer, clerk. Highway, police, fire, everybody has their own piece that has to be updated. I'm hoping to have that done by the end of this year.
Okay.
More than I had hoped that I will define.
Yeah.
Hopefully save whatever you have over.
Yeah, okay, so that's a lot of work still left. So I'm thinking that we add that, we can carry that over as one of, a goal for the next period.
Kara, you did complete a self-evaluation or self-assessment that I forwarded to you, i.e. must have.
I have a blank one forwarded to me, but I don't know, hold on.
No, it was just a narrative. Paragraph.
Did you send it to me in Google? This is, I'm still getting stuff in Google and in Outlook, so I'm a little, I'm trying to track it.
That's what I just gave Derek and Tom, I believe.
Okay.
And in there, he's identified three goals.
Yep. Okay, so you already hit, perfect.
One of which includes.
I think one of the things that's not in here. We're kind of lax in our narrative on our EMS calls. He's brought that up. The guys are doing a lot better. It's been that way for quite some time. And that's what still, they didn't come on board, we didn't know it. Now the guys are being trained to stop and think a little bit. When we come back from an EMS call and we're writing a narrative. All the guys that were on the call get some input into it. So it's a little more complete. And I guess it's making the state a little happier.
Good. That's good. Yeah, everyone always has a little different perspective probably. Um, okay, so I see a system, developing a system for vehicle checks and cleaning is one of the. Okay. And then we have the MEMA plans. Second goal is create a checklist for regular types of inspections that you perform. So that's something you're seeing a need for.
Right, that goes to the, you know, Bill Belichick next minute. One of the hardest things, especially for call ball tier departments, is fire prevention, code enforcement.
Yeah.
Have you ever read Massachusetts laws and OCMRs? They're great for insomnia. And it's, a lot of it is legal speed.
Yeah.
So it's not user friendly for the fire inspector in the field. Big one being something as simple as smoke detectors. There's so many different variants depending on when the house was built. If you add a bedroom. 30 types of detectors out there and probably only kind of a couple of legal and Massachusetts, but the big lots are still selling. So I'm gonna create a checklist where if I'm not available, if somebody reels their head sack, oh my God, I'm closing tomorrow. Then somebody other than me or Tom can take that checklist and go there. And the continuity is the same. One of the things you see in bigger fire departments where they'll send out crew and an agent to do inspection. Well, there's four different working shifts, so they're getting four different inspections. It's not the same, you might not get the same answer from my shift as you work from Tom's shift. So this eliminates that. It's a step by step, it'll be for smoke detectors, smoke scale detectors. Oil furnace, oil tanks, propane tanks, food systems. Fire alarm acceptance test. Everything that, the most common ones we do will be in a standard checklist.
Nice.
And a good thing with that new station management software, that checklist is built in there and it also generates some information.
Okay.
So that if we're not here and one of the other officers was not really blow first on fire prevention. Doesn't have to go dig through the code. You can take that checklist. Everything will be there.
Yeah, that's perfect. Okay. Yeah, because I know that's always an issue with railtors trying to get ahold with part-time fire departments. It's tricky. Good, I like that. Oh God, that's so much easier to hear. Phew, thank you. You don't even notice it's there and then all of a sudden it's gone.
Why are you yelling?
Shut up. So I have those three set for next time. I think those are good goals. Do you see what we have written down? Um.
I think we need to go capital plan review for the fire department. We haven't got that complete.
That, I'm working on that. I did put that in there.
Okay.
Actually, that's fluky, that's part of our staff meeting Wednesday night. I'm gonna go over where I'm at with that.
Okay.
Facilities and apparatus and equipment.
Okay.
The breathing thing is to move forward.
Sure.
That's one of the things I have on my agenda for Wednesday. I gotta try to meet with counselors every time.
Nice, okay.
Let them know what's going on.
Yeah. Are you guys meeting via Zoom or have you been meeting in person?
We meet before a training.
Okay. Okay, live and in person. Um, do you want me to put that as an objective for next time or? Okay. I know that, Josh, is it the capital plan that we had to wait on for funding for the, okay?
Yeah, so the community compact.
Yeah. Okay. Um, what's, what's today's date? Today's the 5th? Yes. Sorry, go ahead Mary. Um, so we've got MEMA plans for the first goal, system for vehicle checks and cleaning. And added to that was it's vehicle checks and cleaning to ensure apparatus and equipment are always ready to go. Checklist for regular inspection was the third. And then you had the fourth. So I'm gonna take your, the first half of your review and I'm gonna attach it to this where we added the goals. Eric, do you have any questions you wanted to ask or any comments you wanted to add? Take what I want. So we're gonna kinda.
I'm like Tom, I'm just witnessing a completely different attitude and presence of a volunteer fire department.
Yeah, I know that that was a pretty major issue was the, the volunteers feeling like they were part of something. So I'm glad to hear that that's, that's been changed.
And we saw the whole association discussion with the police chief.
That kerfuffle. So I have, what, which one are you looking for?
This one is signed, but I don't think.
I know I signed one of those. Okay, so I took Tom's top part and then I filled in the back for your goals and objectives. And I'm gonna sign off on this one. Do you have any questions for us as far as direction or?
Do you feel that you are receiving the appropriate support from us? I can't tell you how many of my peers are, really, who've been there 90 days and we've got 470,000 for a tanker as well.
Yeah.
We had 200,000 for a CP7.
I know, that was pretty nice. I think, I mean, it's been definitely a priority over the years since we've started to be able to fund, you know, things. I think highway equipment and fire equipment have been, and police equipment, a top priority. So it's been nice to see that, all that safety stuff get, get worked out, so.
Yeah, I would say our training sessions are a whole different a whole different ballgame. It's more relaxed, there's no what are these chats, everybody's just there.
Yeah. Good. Any new recruits lately? Probably not right now given this climate. No new recruits.
This one, did you need a decision on this one or did you already make it?
No, that's just a notification.
Okay.
Not sure, I'm just on your bucket.
You can always make him clean the trucks. Rook, get busy.
I do have residents. Actually, I don't hope he's back from the town. Moved the town ten months ago. He's a career firefighter at Westover.
Really?
15 plus years, probably close to 20 because he was a volunteer at South Amity. Long time table history there.
Really?
I actually, when I was reserve fire chief recruited in from active duty, I'm the Westover. Then it happened I was gone, but solid, solid firefighter. Been avoiding my phone call. He was here building a building permit one day.
Okay.
And I told him, I don't sign off until you.
Yeah, yeah, right.
But he's building another law park, so I fed him some slack. And he deployed, I think he's back, but he got sent to Utah for a while.
Okay, oh, yeah, okay.
He's working as an EMT assigned to recruit and crew in Utah, so.
Yeah, that'd be great to add him. Yeah.
He lives right on North Roads, it's close.
Okay.
Got experience, he gets lots of days off, so.
Yeah, that sounds perfect. That's great. Okay, so what I'm signing up right now is, so I have the Commonwealth of Mass Contractor Authorized Signatory Listing. And so I'm adding Chief Modder as a signatory. So you can move forward with that. So select four.
So what are we getting rid of?
If we're buying something, we're getting rid of something, right?
Uh, we're not getting rid of anything. We're, uh. What she's, what she's signing is the authoritative grant for brands. Yeah, sure.
Oh, for brands, okay.
So if it's through MEMA, it's emergency management, preparedness grant. What we're getting is a system that is a fire ground accountability, but it can use all hazards, so it takes its own ID cards that are part of it. As we build it out, it'll also have a scanner. So we can issue police, fire, highway, your own cars. Anybody that's part of our, we are open for operations out of here. It's got a QRS code, so we can put all your information in there. The way it would be used on a fire ground. We get there, I send a crew to the building, they're scanned in. They're in the building, when they come out, you can Google on a computer how they're hitting their house sheet, so they're recap moving somewhere else. We can see real time where they're at as we're moving them. Every time we move somebody, it creates a log. So it's big with MEMA, we have October 2000, we can show them a real time report. And it's not only at the people, it's the apparatus. So we have a
In-service, out-of-service.
In-service, how long, what they're doing. You have highways out for 12 hours with a dump truck pushing snow or clearing limbs. That's all captured and generated for a report. That's all captured and generated for a report.
So that should be all set then, I think. Do you, you need this? Do we need a motion to approve it? I guess it can't hurt, right?
That kind of information will help us if we have a state of emergency because we can, we can track things better. Instead of sitting there scratching our heads saying, oh, what did they do that morning?
So, what's that, motion to apply for that or motion to accept that grant?
To accept the contract. I was just looking for the wording on here, but it's not on here. What would I call that, Joanne? Is there a thing at the top of that? No, the, oh, yeah, sorry, that was for you to sign. That's the ninety-day review. No, the contract in front of you. It wasn't on the agenda, so we can't do action items.
Yeah, that was just for
Oh. So that's, we don't need a motion for that.
So, so Kara, yeah, what he presented to you for today, it's not an agenda, it's a grant that was awarded to the town.
Okay.
So I guess maybe you could do two things. A vote to move forward with signing the contract, but also a vote that provides the chief authorize it.
Yes.
To sign the contract, I guess, one or the other.
Okay, so make a motion to appoint, it's not an appointment. To allow provide, thank you. It's, it's a Monday. To provide authorization to Chief Dave Modder to sign the Commonwealth of Massachusetts contract.
Contract authorized, authorized signatory listing. How much? Well, this is just for him to be able to sign. So is there a second on that?
Yes.
All right, discussion. Come here. Aye. No, we don't need no reason.
Aye.
Okay, so now we're making
purchase of a capability identification system.
So we'll make a motion to approve the contract for, I'm just, I'm sorry. The FFY twenty twenty EMPG application.
Okay. Is that what it is, an application or is it the actual?
So I
It's the application.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Aye.
Sorry, that was So then I have to give you this. Sort of flip-flopping, where'd the, oh. Where'd it go? Review, ah, here it is. So here is what we just went over. And then if you wanna sign it, then just
Okay. Yeah, sorry, we skipped around. I apologize. I used to hate it when people did that. So I'm I did have an agenda. Okay, so now we're gonna go back up. We've got another fire department item. And it is review and take action on fire apparatus proposal by Greenwood Emergency Vehicles LLC for purchase of tanker for the fire department. So this is dated August twelfth. It is, the price is two hundred and sixty-three thousand for, there's a lot of words in the description of the model.
You apparently have something I don't have.
Yes, cuz I think I have the
Are you took my whole package?
No, I didn't take your whole package. I couldn't find my agenda. It wasn't on top and I got confused and
One freight line, M2.
When you start having these meetings on Wednesdays, I feel like I'll be a little Mondays are really rough.
Okay.
So we have a motion to take action on fire apparatus proposal by Greenwood Emergency Vehicles LLC for purchase of a tanker for the fire department in the amount of two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Zero cents. Didn't even do like a ninety-nine thing. Just any discussion. Go Blanford, I'm so proud of us. All in favor? Aye. Congratulations. Thank you.
I was reading the payment terms. What? For a proposal that has payment terms, once we sign it. I was just looking at it. I am for the purchase. Just says hundred percent payment shall be made within five calendar days of arrival at the Greenwood Emergency Vehicles LLC.
So
Arrival of the apparatus or arrival of this contract? Okay.
Swellant, you said delivery in like February?
Yeah. Three hundred days after they get this signed order. That's what they say.
This is very exciting.
We are having them do a pump test on it, so we did it, right?
Does this form leave the factory against the evolving part?
It states
They also said that here they'll do one there too, if we want.
Paragraph three states that they'll do the pump test there, but you have to show up. They won't do it here.
We have to do it there. But we, what we're trying to do is eliminate the aggravation we have with that squad.
With what?
With squad two.
Yeah, so what happens to squad two when this arrives? Do we get rid of the truck when this tanker comes up?
This is just giving a talking session.
So we're in the expand-a-fleet program?
Yes.
Besides, this truck's got a pump on.
Other fire trucks don't have pumps?
Well, there's pumps when there's pumps.
Am I filling out the federal income tax exemption as well?
Oh, that's for the
Okay. But it looks like there's, this is like an additional form to the, our ID stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have to put our employer
I understand here I certify is that he is, so title of officer, so I'd write chief. Blanford, Mass, yada, yada, yada. Orders purchased from Greenwood Emergency Vehicles LLC for the exclusive, exclusive use of Blanford, Massachusetts. Okay.
It's one of the highway garage. Previous discussions before I got here, E and P, so still work there.
Yeah, the drainage book with it.
I heard we got a garage down by the cemetery that we could just pull some trailer out of or something. It solidated a little bit.
Yeah, get a running start and get it back for us.
Yeah, but once you're back in, you're good after that. Get a little street challenge away and after that.
All right.
Yeah, I talked to Greenie the other day. What his plans are.
Excellent. Okay, I think that's it for fire department business unless you have anything else for us. I didn't even see it yet.
It's just a ethics exposure form that Chief Modder's son has expressed interest in joining the Blanford Fire Department as a volunteer.
Okay.
So it's really just the ethics form that each family member and the chief being the allowing authority.
Room on board. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. So let's go back to Act nine MA. We have a resignation letter from Rick Barnard from planning.
Motion to accept.
I will second that. Any discussion?
Sorry to see Rick have to do that, but I
I, yeah, I was just gonna say he has done so much work for the town, volunteer, and it is so appreciated.
It's just a ton of effort.
But I certainly understand where he needs to take the time. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Obviously, we don't have to talk about anything else now. Probably circle back and see what it is that we can maybe town to honor Rick's contribution. His contributions to the town, the hours he's put in as a thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm thinking a figurine with a little heat lamp, a marijuana plant, and a sober camp.
I definitely think we could, something with his name on it would be nice. Yeah. I know some places do like, you ever been in P-Town where they have the, the bricks that are like this big and it has like people's name and they, in Province Town? We are on the, I don't know, just something like that where it's just, it doesn't even, it's not like necessarily that someone has passed, it's just like a, a thank you or whatever.
So we could start paving sidewalks with
I'm just, yeah.
No, no.
I was thinking bicentennial, like the brick type of situation.
Saying that would be cool. We could buy like a four-by-three slab and engrave a volunteer's name on it.
Yeah.
For a while, we can start paving
There you go.
sidewalks through town.
Oh, there's like an analogy we could make. We could come up with a Yeah.
You keep working to, to the betterment of a mini park. There's a spot that you could do something like that.
Well, I know that the benches were just redone. We could do a plaque or something on one of the benches. That would be nice. Then do a little event or something. That'd be cool.
Yeah, we could put a bench there in honor of Rick.
I think there is that was just repainted, but I'm thinking, I don't think there's a plaque on it yet. Maybe we could do like a thank you type of thing. I don't know where we would get order those. Do you guys know of a company that
Yeah, there's a little award shit shop right across from the Big Y.
Yeah, I think there's something Westfield, East Hampton, okay.
Over that lot that has the little drive-through coffee shop on it.
Yeah, that's a great idea though, Josh. We definitely should. Um, okay. So we have the ninety-day review for animal control officer, but I have to say I have had like no experience with working with her besides
Totally impressed.
I mean, she was great. She came to our hearing. She did a great job. She's, I haven't had any complaints. She's responded. Yeah. She seems professional. She knows what she's doing.
And from a, I would say from a public significance standpoint, you know what, I mean, she certainly expressed that, hey, yes, I'm here to take care of animals, but I also have to manage the people that take care of animals. And you know, we're seeking the best outcome possible, not seeking
Yeah.
detrimental.
Exactly.
So.
So we do have this monthly activity report. She's had so this was the, looks like it was the month, okay. So the first one is July. There were nine calls answered, nine completed, nine followed up on one animal attack, one dog impounded, and one dog returned to owner.
Yeah, that would be her first quarter report, right?
Then we've got August, we've got two calls answered, two completed, two followed up on. And then September, one of each. And then a miscellaneous impound of a bird. So it, you know, all of the calls have been completed and followed up on, so. Yeah. So do you want to send, do you wanna give me a paper copy to fill it at home or do you wanna fill it out based on, okay? If I just had, I know that I want everything digital, but that one I can't really print. That would be better. That would be better, yeah. Okay. Perfect. Yes, that's a great idea. Thank you. Um, so I guess we're gonna table the ninety-day review of animal control officer until the twenty-sixth. Is it the twenty-sixth, nineteenth?
Columbus Day is next Monday. Twenty-sixth is what he said.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are, but, but her meeting is on the twenty-sixth.
No worries. Meeting the brownie. Green thing.
The green highlighter.
Um, unfinished business. Ah, the personnel policies. Oh, that, we, I'm sorry, I crossed that off because we did it last week. Yeah. So personnel policies. I am not seeing anything.
I had a couple.
You got some comments?
Oh, no, I just had a couple of them when I checked it. I think I did take a moment with you. That's my understanding. Are we accepting it?
Well, we've gotten feedback from department heads. Question, Mary?
Yeah, I mentioned the last time that this was brought up. That we have already existed a freedom policy. By the way, I the town administrator was not the best person to do this because of his position of authority. And the town fathers who were at the time, Andy Martin Arrow, Adam Dolby, under LaRocque's in conjunction with the town council, thought a neutral party would be better. So, because I had had experience as a police officer and it was the town clerk at the time. They put it over there, so.
I don't think we even had a town administrator at that point.
Angie came in at some point.
Yeah.
But anyway, that's, that's it. So I, I think that ought to be taken into consideration.
So I was, I was looking for it online. It was instead was I took what the procedure was for the immediate contract.
Yeah. Um, yeah. Well, I know I've read this one because I think I helped put it together.
Which one, I guess I don't have it. I have the draft of leave policies discharge this one. Oh, there it is, nine one oh three, this procedure, sorry. I guess I just don't have it blown out.
Um, I don't think I have it digitally unless I'm losing my mind, Joanne.
I'm looking at this previous policy.
So really.
There's a step one, there's a step two, step three, it's pretty clear. I think at the time, the, the previous select board might have made that decision.
Correct.
You know, in this grievance, the department head, there's a step one, the department head, the step two, the town, the other step is left for it.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that, that's appropriate more to go through when trying to resolve the issue involving someone else in a different department. Uh, I don't know how appropriate that's, great as I think your civilization's built might be, or you have structure here.
I think we're in a different place now than we were when this, yeah. Um, uh, so I don't mind going over it and reviewing it and then seeing if there's any adjustments that we want to make. Um.
And I think in the previous set of policies, we addressed sexual harassment that we visited. See how we can improve it based on what's promised.
Yep.
Again, this was visited or vetted by town council.
Yeah, but I think Josh has a good point that we were in a place where, A, we didn't have a town administrator at the time. And we were in a, we were not in a healthy place. The reason that we brought a harassment policy up was because we needed a harassment policy. You know, we weren't in a good place. So I think that to streamline the procedure, I think that we can definitely take a look at, you know, and, and I would definitely want to involve at this point the town administrator because he, you know, he manages a lot of this stuff for us. He manages our personnel. Yeah.
At first blush, um, I think there's, uh, we're trying to mix two things here, right? And one is, the town has a harassment policy. Two, this policy in front of us is a grievance procedure.
Yeah.
Okay, which is similar but different.
Yeah.
One, if you say, hey, I'm being harassed by the town clerk's office, I would follow the harassment policy. It is part of a grievance procedure, but that's the prescribed one.
Yeah.
An harassment claim. So I think we just need to find a way to blend the, blend the two so that we're.
Yeah.
So that we have our, our strong harassment policy in place, and then we have a grievance procedure, which, you know, grievance can come up over anything, right? So not necessarily harassing contact by itself.
Okay. So, um, so we can definitely take those home, the harassment and the grievance, and, and do some work seeing what we need to blend. But in the meantime, do you want us to, Josh, you've received feedback from, on the other policies from department heads. Is that correct?
So I got two. So what we did was, uh, in the grievance section.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't identify, um, a grandchild. So it said, well, there's a grandchild.
Okay.
I look at them further. There's no real law or regulation that describes where you meant it's really just matter of. Like if you were wanting to, so I did, in the track change, if you see in section seven four, it would be, um, I added, uh, an everyone's name, spouse, um, mother-in-law.
Yeah.
In-laws, brother, sister, uh, grandparent, or grandchild, wasn't included, so I added that.
Okay.
Another one that was mentioned was, uh, we've identified, that's what I was looking for. We identified, uh, uh, we, we defined, I guess, full-time, part-time, and subverbing employees.
True.
Uh, we do have one employee. Yeah. Or doesn't identify, please, that. We do have one employee that's thirty hours a week. So full-time is forty plus hours, part-time is.
Less than thirty-two.
Right, so if you go to, um, the vacation, the personal leave, yeah, um, it references full-time. So, you know, if you are a full-time employee, you get as well as the regular.
Yeah.
So our one employee with thirty hours, we said, well, I think with thirty hours, you should get that.
Nope, that's not the law.
So that was the other comment that I had.
Okay.
If you give it to the, if you give it to the person that has thirty, then why aren't you giving it to the person that has twenty?
Well, so here's.
Given it to the person with twenty, why aren't you giving it to the person with sixteen?
It defines the policy around vacation, full-time, whether you prepare yourself to rest, um, part. Thirty, thirty hour a week, hopefully, felt that. That it shouldn't just be full-time, just a thirty hours.
It's a different rate, right? What section is that in?
Seven, six. So like, in, in vacation, it's just full-time employees who have been continuously employed by the town for more than two year, two and three years, for less than five years, shall receive five additional days of vacation.
Yep.
So that's when they're very all-remedied.
Okay.
Said, what about employees that are thirty?
They're not full-time.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Eric. If you start to break it down like that, you end up with, what about twenty-eight?
It's the same, it's the same reason we break down healthcare benefits, right? So people that have over X number of hours become eligible for the, for the healthcare plans by the city. So we purposely make decisions on part-time, full-time, less than part-time decisions based on the finances of the town and the cost effectively to do the job.
Yeah.
If, what the question should be, if we have an employee that's doing thirty hours a week, is why aren't we having him do forty?
So, uh, yeah, so there, my comments are similar to that, same people, just sharing depth, the comments.
Okay, yeah.
But I agree.
Question, Mary?
Uh, should insurance coverage be mentioned in here somewhere?
This is just identifying, um, the different leave policies. So there's jury duty, military, occupational sick, agreement, term of execution, F L A.
But they.
The personal use.
We, we currently have a bylaw, I think, I'm pretty sure it's bylaw, that says we're gonna pay your medical insurance forever. And it has been discussed by hire boards to change that from seventy-five, twenty-five to maybe two. That come into play with this.
That's just not what we're looking at in these specific sections.
Yeah, I don't think it does.
So this is just addressing what moves around.
Okay. It, it does talk about that.
Oh, right, so if you go to, oh, so you go to simply, which is section seven four, three. It just, it, it outlines rules of engagement that comes to being asked. And this just, you guys know, I didn't, I didn't pay. So, so there was a, uh, and I don't know if the history was prior to me as much as I looked into it. So these policies that have, wow.
Mm-hmm.
That we've been kind of following them as a de facto.
Yeah.
As a kind of guideline, um, to keep things in order. So.
Yeah. Yeah, we did.
So we're just kind of picking it up.
Mm-hmm. Yep. No, it's good to take a look at it.
These sections of the grievance section.
Okay.
I'm only, the only concern I have there is the, which I'll give you feedback in writing too, but it's, the head of each department shall investigate and ascertain the validity of a non-occupational sick request. It's tough. What, how can I validate whether someone's sick or not?
Well, I mean, is it, is it requesting?
Josh calls me tomorrow and says, hey, boss, I want to take sick leave.
I think it's more investigating a long-term, right?
Well, no, this is just saying non-occupational sick leave. You get ten days as a full-time employee. So I'm saying we're putting a lot of onus on the department head to valid, to validate a sick leave request of an employee.
Well, who else would take ownership of that, though?
Well, I'm the person that authorizes the sick leave. I can give them all ten days. On the eleventh day, I'm sorry, I got no more sick leave to give you. I don't care.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just, it's very strongly worded, but the person who's making that determination.
Well, I think it gives.
Qualification to determine whether someone's sick and needs to take sick leave.
I think it gives us the right to do so, but it doesn't mean that we have to.
Well, it just, it takes away.
To gauge the. Not necessarily to confirm it, but to acquire some information to, to help you.
To determine if I.
Yeah.
So yeah, I spoke to, or I spoke to him, he didn't sound, I mean, I know he's not a doctor, but I don't know what I mean, but have some sort of responsibility to.
Yeah. I think if it was like extended and like became an issue.
You only get ten days. Ten days, you're out.
Yeah, ten days. Yes, sir.
What if, what if he called and said every Friday, um, July and August and a weekend?
Sounds like a plan to me.
Well, you had a sick leave at that point, so it matters.
You had abuse it?
No.
Absolutely. But again, how do you, how do you prove that? Is it what, you know?
What if, what if I fight, uh, high mountain lute disorder by playing golf every Friday? That's my medical excuse to take off the player belt. Just for your health. Yeah.
Yes, Joanne. I don't know if we have to require them for.
Three days, three days.
After three days. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Three days, well, three days for most state laws and most federal laws. If you don't show up for three days and don't have an excuse, that could be considered job abandonment, isn't it? So then you reset a letter in the mail that says you show up on the fourth day or you just lost your job.
So then that gives them some, um, control to look after three days for that, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just, the, the start of that paragraph is very strongly worded and.
All right. Um, do you, are you looking for us to make, um, to approve any pieces of that, or should we?
It's up to, so I think.
We had talked a little about, yeah.
What I could do is have your next, we're getting together of one, um.
Yeah.
Slide of, uh, policies.
As a whole?
Attained one.
Okay.
Yep. At some point, we have to get policy in place, even if it's not in code agreement, just so that we can have policy.
Yeah.
The reason why we did it that way, though, is, is because we, uh, there's something, diligence for our, for the union.
What?
So do you like, put this on your next, like, uh, working agenda, so?
We end up, when we have the big group policy, right, then the union has the right to, I don't know, has the right to review.
Do we approve it first and then they review?
Well, we're, we're reviewing a town policy, and as long as our policy states that in the application that there is a, uh, an organized agreement in place, the organization
Okay.
Has authority.
Yeah.
But we still, because it's a town policy.
So we can approve it regardless and then, okay.
And really what it gives them the opportunity to do is say, oh, we saw in the town policy that, boy, you laid out this golden carpet for this group over here.
Sure, sure.
Didn't get to the union, so we would like to.
We want that too, yeah, okay.
And we can say you can either follow under town policy, or you can follow under union later.
Okay, okay. Mary?
Can the, the compilation of all the policies go out to all the departments for a final look at before you've got it approved?
I think, I mean, it can, but we did, we did each policy one at a time to all the departments. So they've already approved.
Each department see it after changes like the May.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, okay. So then, um, we'll look at that for next week. So that should be an action item for next week. Yes, please, sorry, for the nineteenth. Next week is a long weekend.
I will not be here on the nineteenth.
You won't? What possible better place could you be?
Oh, I'll be at about three thousand feet flying back to Washington State from a wedding that I don't want to go to.
What man ever wants to go to a wedding is that my question. Okay.
Some of them have really good receptions.
Um, Josh, do, do you have any other, um, unfinished business? I think that is coming up under a new business.
I don't know, if I only had an agenda.
I gave you an agenda. Do we have any other unfinished before we move on to new? No? So, um, we reviewed.
Select board meeting schedule and meetings?
We did that last week. So we've got review animal control quarterly report. We did that.
Yep.
Uh, point assistant electric inspector is backup. So do I hear a motion?
Uh, no motion. So much earlier we did last time, just, I brought this up under new business as an action.
Okay.
This gentleman here, John, he's the electrical inspector at Chester.
Okay.
There's a cover letter, your resume, package.
Yep.
Uh, if I invite him to your next meeting, so that.
Top one.
Talk to him, ask questions or whatnot.
What's his full name?
John Van.
Hennigan?
Hennigan.
Van Hennigan.
Hennigan.
Okay.
And so all, also trying to do really just to kind of make sure that both our towns, and a lot of this is left because of our, we've been partying a lot together, do the, uh, setup of the, uh, department system.
Okay.
Uh, but making sure that both towns are covered.
Yep.
Larry is out on vacation, is traveling somewhere, he's not around.
Yep.
That there's a backup that can call or assist him.
Just curious, are other, is like Chester appointing our inspectors as their backup?
Right, yeah, except for, so Larry's not interested.
I was just gonna say, I highly got Larry's interest.
No, but I told Larry, well, maybe you guys can like talk more, maybe build a.
Yeah. I don't think Larry wants to work any harder.
We did.
He's retired. Okay.
We haven't, haven't been building, we've got the same building that, um, so that's, that's the intent here.
Okay, yeah, makes sense. Cause we've certainly found ourselves in the bind in the past, so it's good to have a backup for everything.
But his resume and cover letters is there for your review, and then by the next meeting, hopefully.
Okay. Okay. Excellent, thank you. We have the all department expense report.
Are we, uh, one, two, three, or?
No, we're gonna do, we're gonna meet them next week.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Sorry, I keep saying that.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Okay, which was the select board expense thing?
We talked about it last time. Oh, are you doing that just to be annoying?
Gaffer, gaffer right to the side of the boat. Stand by on the gab.
You want to talk about IT? Explain that one again.
Our town, town clerk assistant is well over spent at forty-three point eight seven. Our town, town clerk assistant is well over spent at forty-three point eight-seven percent.
So, we're, um, gonna give the. Which we're actually working on. The applications they want. But, um, you'll have a. Uh, your meeting on the twenty-sixth, you're gonna have a list of.
Sure.
Verification forms, so that more necessary. So, we have a deadline, an internal deadline.
Um, do we have any more, we may anymore headwind, what is available funding for Watson Park to move forward with fixing that stone wall?
Yep, so, there, the, the town of Janice.
Yep. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, since when did we own a two thousand eight Mercury?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that shouldn't have happened.
Okay, but it is there now, now we have to talk about it.
Right.
Yeah.
Why do you wanna talk about?
Because it looks like it came to the town as a bill.
No, it's.
It's a, it's a proposal to fix some rust.
I mean, so that market's getting stuff, it's obviously not. The funds that are being held by the association through the donation from ever so much that will pay for the market.
Yeah, but those funds aren't sufficient to cover this.
Says someone who may be a member of that.
You know, he just shared it with me as in, hey, you know, what do you think about this?
We've got some cagey people running stuff around here.
I think I told her, I think we should get more quotes, and that's what she feels, that's just giving information to me.
Okay.
My thoughts, but that's not a town bill, and I accidentally gave to Joanne.
Thank you, Joanne.
And there's also, uh, in your package, the inspection twenty-five lesson.
No worries.
Okay. So, we have Kola looking to update or fix and rust on the, on the, on the donated vehicle. That's what that really just stands for, right?
Yeah.
Their margins.
Yeah. Plan. Um, all right, next up, we have a disclosure statement for volunteer firefighter, we did that. And then we've got discuss repair and replace and or replace roof at library.
What?
So, we just put that in there for discussion purposes, um. Mary, I'm sure, they, they have an issue currently, and we've been kind of. We should just. That exists, or do we talk about how we can budget for, um, just repairing the whole roof overall?
We have seventy-five thousand dollars in the library stabilization fund, they're walking here.
Well, the thing is, is, so we've been brainstorming different ideas, only because there is a future project on the pipeline, but.
Do we replace the whole roof, yeah?
This project is coming down the pipe, so, you know, just the chicken and the egg thing.
What are we looking at for a cost for a repair?
Right this minute, I made an executive decision to go ahead and replace maybe a dozen shingles on the roof.
Okay.
For fear that in the winter, if we get a bad storm and a windstorm, it's gonna loosen more, and I have been assured that it's not gonna cost us more than, um, uh, four hours of work by Mr. Piper. We had another fellow from Russell who looked at it and he came up with a couple thousand dollars.
Okay.
So, this seems to be an easy option and a fit fit. If, if we lose more shingles, we're gonna have a real problem this week, so we don't wanna do that, so we'll, we'll do a, a stopgap measure, and Josh would like to see a new roof put on. And new gutters, because we've got gutter problems.
Yeah.
Said there might be something available in capital, uh, line item, but this means we need to go out full force to get this, I believe there are three layers on that roof. Which can get on, come on.
They'd be stripping them, yeah.
So, and we can't, uh, we can't get that going between now and, and probably November first.
Yeah.
Well, if you're gonna wait to better fix it now, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that's what we're gonna do, and we've got, um, another problem with a couple of the cedar shakes, and John said he could do a, a repair on those, not replace everything. But just the shingles that were necessary, and the bulkhead has a strip of metal, like a threshold.
Hmm.
That has rusted through, and he thought he could solder that, or solder a new piece in there, which would stabilize it and get us through.
Okay. That's good.
We haven't, we haven't, we have not okayed those two other items yet.
I would reach out to, uh. Big guy at the highway department. Jia, Jia, John, Jay, Jay, come on, James.
James, smart.
James. Reach out to James, he's an auto body welder guy, 'cause he routinely makes one or two vehicles a year just for demo derbies. So, if you're looking for someone who could just cut out and weld a strip of metal on your bulkhead, he might be a guy that can do that in a couple hours on a weekend, or so, I mean, you're still gonna pay him, but. I would ask, I would ask him for a quote on fixing it.
Um, yeah, that makes sense to me, I agree to, um, repair it before winter, but I, I, I agree, I don't know if replacing the whole roof before we do a. An addition makes sense, I mean, how many year, we're quite a ways out on an addition, though.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's why we were like.
Yeah.
Is your, uh, second question, is your addition going to go over, i- in your plan, is it going over the top of where the bulkhead is, or do you just really need it in the bulkhead? Okay, so we do just need to fix the bulkhead and replace it.
Stabilize it.
Good.
Containment.
Okay.
So, all these, there's some moving parts happen here.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
In the order of, uh, checks and balances, thought, all right, let's bring up these questions, let.
Yeah.
You're on notice, you know, forward to the finance committee, put them on notice as well, so that as, as Mary continues to receive forward, it's, it's the same quotes and getting that color, whatever it's gonna be. You know, if you that move forward without any gaps, you're taking, you're getting done.
Yep.
I don't feel bad about. Paying a bill on a line item or something that you had discussed, like, so that's, that's what we do.
I think, yeah, there's a couple of options there, you have to build in stabilization funds, then you have cap.
Oh, it's not impossible.
So, yeah, I mean, it's doable, it's just the scale or scope of what we have to do to the roof, that's gonna make a difference.
Yeah.
That's a whole other thing, and who are to do a whole roof, there's ups and downs.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I mean, Mr. Piper will find out when he gets up there on the roof, and if he steps on shingles and he starts falling off, then, okay, then you're gonna have to do more than just replace.
Yeah, if he gets about two feet shorter, you know, that's.
I'm not a total construction expert, but their gutters are, when you look at it, you see it's large.
Yeah.
The runoff is not.
But even, you could put new seamless gutters on that thing for five hundred bucks.
Other than you're talking about just repairing the one area, is it like if it, oh.
Yeah.
Should be assessed, and if we have to replace all the gutters.
Hey, just call a seamless guttering company, know.
And is that something that if we replaced and put new gutters on, could, that's something that could be reused if we did a. Uh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, and, and the, the important one's really on the size.
Yeah, so that might be something worth looking into fixing soon then, if that's. TJ?
Yeah, uh, I had gutters put on the new garage down there.
Yeah.
From Mr. Gutter on a oil, and it was only like seven hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Okay.
They just, they just come and run out the back of the truck and you're done, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that may be worthwhile. Okay, thank you, guys, um, do we have any other new business?
I have two picks.
Okay.
I connected with Sarah briefly, uh, earlier today, and just give you guys something on where we are with the Leann Thompson reimbursements. So, there are seventy-three identified parcels.
Yeah.
Um, uh, thirty-nine, they're holding off into quarter two.
Okay.
Uh, so, by October thirteen, well, at least they're gaining for October thirteen, they're gonna be sending out letters to those seventy-three.
Yep.
Saying, hey, we have on record a record show, and, and moving up, you can go back, so she can confirm that whoever she's working with is that.
Owner of the parcel.
Yep.
Reversed.
Wow, okay.
And reimbursement clarifying from Sarah is not sending a check, reimbursement is credit on the taxes.
It's credit on the taxes, correct.
Oh, is that what that is?
Yeah.
Unless she's in a, unless she was in a position where she absolutely had to write a check because like someone sold the property.
Exactly, yeah.
Then the re, the reimbursements are actually the credit for their tax.
And the R T two is. At some point, I was talking about when you want to, that being, or maybe I'm wrong, but the, the new contracts, contract.
Yeah.
I don't know.
We renegotiate, when the union writes us a letter and says they're interested in renegotiating, if not, we're not interested in renegotiating. We just let the contract run.
I look at you.
You're the guy.
But I just wanna make sure you're aware that it does expire from thirteen.
They'll send us a letter in accordance with the contract, they'll send us a letter sometime in January to February timeframe, stating that they would like to renegotiate the contract, and then at that time, they should tell us also what they specifically want to. Or if it's just a routine contract, let's go for a favor.
Is that it? Wow. Are we done?
Oh, I was thinking about something, anyway, follow up with Sarah on, uh, her intent there, Josh. Just to make sure, 'cause I know that with, uh, you know. With the newspaper here taking quotes, we don't want that quote to get out of the newspaper in the wrong fashion, is what that is intended, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point. Up for the Leann Thompson stuff.
So, I think she had over, what, the list itself was like over four hundred properties she had to go through, so. Yeah, and she's getting down to seventy-three, then she'll start to get them to pick it out.
Yeah.
Our, our R T was a huge help.
Yeah, I'm so thankful we went that route. This goes with, um, Chief Matters.
Perhaps, maybe we could do a, an article on both, one, here's, here's the potential refunds coming out, and here's the, hey, uh, we're gonna do land parcel, resales, or retakes for these people that have a lot of the big exits for ten years. Maybe we can have our, but address them both.
Or let me go to Sarah and get it right from.
Yeah.
That probably, yeah, yeah.
See, some of, I mean, those that have major pensions, they're holding three taxes down the road.
Right, but, but from a, from a news story standpoint, I'm just thinking of what you're saying, hey, we're doing these, but we're on some business. Yeah, just sort of a, an assessor's office, here's your tax, and I'll give you, it's filler, maybe they will use it, maybe a lot.
All right, are we good? Say it, meeting adjourned, seven twenty-six. Oh, yours is the clock, this one's right.